Evening, everybody. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council chambers. If everybody would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have some Boy Scouts in the audience if you'd like to come up and say the pledge for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Chief Coleman, would you mind leading us in the invocation tonight?
Yeah. City Mayor, members of council, if you'd like to.
Says on. There we go. If you'd like to pray with me, please bow your heads. Dear Father, we come to you tonight. We ask for your blessings on this council, the people in this chambers, those that are watching. We ask for them to, for protection first, for them and their families, for them the wisdom and the discernment to do the business of the city. We also ask for your protection of the people of Puerto Rico that have gone through such devastation and tragedy over this year and years past with the earthquakes. We ask for your comfort, your healing, your protection, and aid. We ask that you just bless those that are serving overseas and locally and their first responders and those that are just trying to do, make the world a better place. We ask these in your name. Amen.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, January 21st at approximately 6:30 PM. We have all members of council present. Our first order of business is a ceremonial item, recognizing the citizens' contribution to Shop With A Cop. Mayor Sladek, would the council like to join us on the floor?
Well, this program has been going on for how many years? Nineteen years. I was gonna say as long as I could remember, which is pretty accurate. And we still appreciate the bikes that are provided through this program. So, I'm gonna turn this over to Chief Coleman to tell a little bit more about everything.
Thank you. Every year, if I could, I could have the members that are, the group that's responsible for the bike program, that does such a good, makes what Oviedo is, makes it great. Just to, the ones that we're recognizing is, I don't see Greg. Greg didn't make it?
He's two minutes away.
I'll start at the bottom and work backwards. It started off with Tom Arthur and Al Franks, who are the original two. Mr. Copeland, Mr. Garrett, Mr. Matthews, Mr. Nickerson, Mr. Arthur, and Mr. Whitmer, if he's, makes it here in time. But to start off, I'll let you, if you would like to tell us how it is, but I just want to tell from the police department's side, every year we do a Shop With A Cop, and they sponsor that as well with a bike. With every kid that we sponsor, they issue a bike and a helmet and a bike lock to them. So every year, we get to see the kids do, receive that as a gift from us, but really it's from them and all the hard work that they do, so.
That's a great day. It started nineteen years ago. Al Franks and then the Franks were in Walmart buying three bikes for their grandkids that were coming in, and they were gonna donate the bikes after they left. A lady was there, had a coupon, a twenty dollar bill, with her daughter to buy a bike. And this is, this is the key guy to our program. So, the coupon wasn't good, so the lady was very upset, and the kid was crying, so they went over and said, "Look, we don't want to embarrass you, but we would like to help you with this, because we have grandchildren and we know how it is." And they gave twenty bucks to help get the bike, and then he said he got the biggest hug he ever had. From then on, he was a, an appraiser, and he said to all of his buddies, "No more free rides. You bring a bike." So the first year, I think there was nineteen bikes. There was maybe sixty or seventy the next year. The year I got in, the third year, which is sixteen years ago, we got a hundred and twenty-five. We go all the way up to about five hundred brand-new bikes and helmets and locks for these kids, through different police departments, schools, and some churches. And it's, it's a really great program. It's been working real well. So we get a lot of support from the community, which we need, and so if you want to help us out, just get ahold of us.
I remember the first year we did the bike parade, I would call it, where we took them from, I believe, your house and Kingsbridge and took them to St. Stevens Church. And I don't know how many vehicles and trailers and everything else we had, but we really had our own parade, because you can only put so many bikes in the back of a truck, truck bed and a trailer. So it was quite, it was quite the feat. I mean, it wasn't any fanfare per se, but it was a, it was a neat feeling to know that these bikes were going to kids that truly needed them. So with that, and with all of your help, we do appreciate, and that's one reason we wanted to recognize you in front of council, in front of the public, because of the work you do and all the things that you do. Officer Mancato has, has a plaque that we would like to give you from, from us to you all, that we would like to show our gratitude for your participation and help with us.
Greg handles the Oviedo Police Department bikes. He also buys all of our bikes. He's a busy guy, and he, we couldn't do anything without him, I'll tell you that much.
He's a great guy, and he makes a great, great potter sauce like you and me. Would anybody like to say anything? No? No, thank you.
It's a great, exciting day to see the kids get the bikes, and that's why we all come back.
And thank you again, guys. This is, it's an amazing amount of bikes, and I know your hearts been in it for, everybody's hearts have been in it, but yours for as long as I've known you.
You still doing the golf tournament this year?
Yeah, I'll be in October.
They do a golf tournament, so if you golf, you don't golf, if you want to sponsor, I know there's a lot of fundraisers going on, but this is one I can personally vouch for, that the money they raise goes to buy in a ton of every size, type, and category of bike that you can imagine, so we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have the Texas Hold'em poker tournament as well.
Okay. Coming to social media near you.
It's totally legal.
Who can believe that? If we can grab a couple pictures, we'll be.
Yeah.
All right. Moving along, we're up to item number two on the agenda, approval of the minutes. What's the council's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Madam Mayor?
I move we approve the minutes.
I second.
We have a motion to second. Madam Mayor, you have the floor.
May look good.
All right.
Everything looks good? Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, here are none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we're on to the public comment portion of the agenda. I have four requests of individuals wishing to speak. The first one is Mr. Barry Camack. Just please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Barry Camack, 835 Palmetto Street, here in Oviedo. I've resided in the Garden Grove neighborhood since 1989. Panther Street is the entrance road to my neighborhood, as well as to the residents residing in Lake Charm Country Estates. This road has always been a beautiful natural green, but unfortunately, this changed approximately two years ago, when a blue sledge-like material was sprayed high into the trees on the entire north side of Panther Street, which is over two-tenths of a mile alone. This was done by a private company. I spoke then with Councilwoman Sladek about this, and stated she would contact Mr. Cobb. I did not know the results of this conversation. A few weeks after the spraying, the entire north side of Panther Street was laid in death and decay. Please see picture one, taken this month to show an example of the destruction the spraying caused, and its residual aesthetics two years later. I contacted Mr. Y's department shortly thereafter, I did see city of Oviedo vehicles and workers trying to clean up the destruction. My question on this matter is why are taxpayer dollars being used to clean up a situation caused by private entities? Over the next two years, there are additional sprays along Panther Street. Please see pictures two, three, and four. Taken in November of 2018, showing the results of one of these sprays. Once again, I contacted Mr. Y's office to get the debris cleaned up, and while it took some time, the dead debris was partially removed. The most recent spraying occurred around September, October of 2019. Results were the same, but the death and destruction of vegetation. I once again contacted Mr. Y's office to both the debris, but unfortunately, it has still not been cleared. My concern with this last spraying is that my neighbor stopped to speak with the spray technicians and asked what chemicals they were spraying, and they refused to tell him. During this exchange, he noticed several containers of Roundup on the truck. So my question is now, is Roundup being sprayed over a two-tenth of a mile city road traveled by pets, residents, babies and striders, and home to two school bus stops? My frustration is that two entities can spray chemicals and destroy the aesthetics of our neighborhood, and the process possibly spray a chemical that I understand is linked to cancer, and therefore not accountable to clean up their mess. I may like to make my concern the matter of public record in hopes a greater degree of effort will be exerted to get this situation resolved. My expectation that the city council and city manager require the entities responsible for the situation make Panther Street whole again, removing all remnants of dead and decaying flora, including the debris remaining on the tree line, to be completed by the end of February 2020. Also, if Roundup is being sprayed, our city council and city manager will need to put a stop to this practice immediately, and will be actively forbidding the mass spraying of such chemicals within the city of Oviedo if one is not already in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next written request is from Ms. Catherine Townsend.
Good evening. Haven't been before y'all in a long time.
Name and address for the record, please.
Catherine Townsend, 444 Timberwood Trail, Oviedo.
Thank you.
32765. Some of you up here probably remember that I served some years ago on your charter review committee. I was on the Board of Adjustment, the PZA, and the original New Downtown Committee, and I currently serve as the Seminocultural Arts Liaison to your Arts Commission. I'd like to share with you just a few of my thoughts on, I've heard that you're getting ready to consider doing a new charter review, and I have some thoughts on that. I would start out by asking that you hire a moderator from the Florida League of Cities, or perhaps from UCF, but not have it be anybody that's in town. That is my phone. I apologize. Holy moly.
I like your ring.
This is being videoed. Let it not be the city attorney. I would ask that you not place yourselves on that committee, as I have heard has been done in the past. I think Oviedo deserves to have the opinions of the residents heard, and that this should be a citizens' committee, not an ad hoc committee of the city council. That would be kind of like the hen and the rooster story. I would, I would suggest that each council member appoint three people. A committee of fifteen leaves enough for absences to still have a quorum, and to still conduct a good review. I would ask that you not appoint any former employees or elected officials that have less than five years out of service. I would also ask that you have the committee review the entire charter, not just things that you've chosen that you think deserve the time. I don't believe there should be any limits put on the charter review committee. I would also ask that you leave the recommendations of the committee as they stand, with no revisions by the council. I would also ask that you not bundle, I think we all can remember the election of 2018, when the state bundled so many of their charter review recommendations and brought a convoluted mess that turned out to be. I think that, you know, citizens may want to expand your terms if we thought we could end them at the same time, so I would ask that you not bundle issues. Leave the mess they are, because they are, in fact, separate issues. I would also ask that you maybe have this ready for the August primary ballot. I think it would be the most cost-efficient way to do it for the city, and that it would have less issues for the voter during that election rather than in November. Those are my thoughts on the charter review. Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize for my phone.
Not a problem. All right, the next request is from John Bealan. Name and address for the record.
John Belland, 2689 Running Springs Loop, Oviedo, Florida. Obviously. Good afternoon, or good evening. This afternoon, I just wanted to come here, and I'll make this really brief. I recently was on social media, and I read a post regarding the city's goal to be carbon neutral, and I think it was by 2050, maybe, or something to that, and I've been a Oviedo resident for a long time. I hadn't heard of that before, and I hadn't heard about any committees, and I hadn't seen anything, any progress towards that goal. So I wanted to see if there is a way to get involved, maybe even head a committee. I'd be willing to donate any time that was needed towards this goal, and very passionate about it. And I recently had a few friends of mine leave Oviedo, and they left for a place called Bad Cock Ranch, and one of their big things is that there is sustainable energy out of the gate, and they have big solar farm and everything. I think it's a real boost to Oviedo to have something similar that we could, that we could tout as, as being part of the future going forward. So, that's really all I had. I don't know if a committee is formed yet, and if there's not one, I'd like the possibility to, to see what we could do to obtain it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next request is Mr. Mike Davis.
Can I give this to the council?
Thank you.
Sorry?
Thank you.
Thank you. Just please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mike Davis. Address 1022 Faircloth Court, Oviedo. Good evening. I'll skip the pleasantries, because I only got three minutes. Half of the room is represented tonight, representing the organization I founded, One Body Outreach, and we have a real problem, because we're supposed to be at Round Lake Park tonight. This is a night, we're usually there two, three nights a week, and there are some things that have been going on at Round Lake Park that seem like, you know how you can, and I didn't prepare a statement, I'm coming from my heart, you know how you can tell someone you love them, or tell someone you care about them, but they don't feel it? I'm sure you all care about Round Lake, but we don't feel that way. We feel like things that are going on at Round Lake would never happen at Oviedo on the park, and we currently don't have lights, which we were told nearly two weeks ago that it would be a three-day process. We've had one of the basketball courts that we use unavailable for virtually close to a year, and we currently, this is a drop in the bucket of the amount of people that we serve at one time. Over the last five years, we've served nearly 200 kids and families, and if I had another three minutes, I could give you, I could give you ten success stories coming from that park. And we just want that park to be treated with the same sense of urgency that other parks are treated with. I know there's issues, I've heard the reasons why, but we just feel like that process is being delayed unfairly, and that's why we're here tonight. So, I left you a minute to spare. But those are emails from several parents that we have. If I had more time to round up more, I would have had thirty, forty more. If I had another day, I could have filled the room with people. We just want to be able to use the park. We're not asking for any money. We're not asking for anybody to do anything other than make the park functional the way it was intended. So, oh, and regarding the charter, I think, just a thought, I think that it should be left in the hands of the people that you're serving, which are the residents. But that's all I got. I got twenty seconds, so I'm good.
Thank you very much. All right, the last written request is from Ms. Karen Harriet.
Karen Harriet, 1006 Corbin Court, just off Pine Street, and I'm here to speak to the need for a charter review. And again, I reiterate that it should be citizens, not current or former councilmen, our members, or employees, that it be, the entire charter be open to review, that it be, the recommendations be sent to the people as they are written, not revised, and that it be available for the August ballot. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. I have no other written requests. Is there anybody else wishing to address council at this time? Just please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Thomas from 3550 Diamond Leaf Lane here in Oviedo, and I just want to kind of second and third what the other folks said about the charter review. I believe that it should be comprised of citizens, if not a combination of citizens and council members, but not just council members. I think there's a sentiment in the city now, maybe over the last couple of years I've lived here now, going on seventeen years. I think the awareness in the community is at a high point that it hasn't been since I've lived here, and citizens want to feel that they're included on the decisions that are being made, and not just a top-down kind of situation as, as it, as it has seemed in the past. So, I would agree, again, that it should be on the ballot, like the other lady said, for this August, and again, if it can be a combination, I don't have the numbers that Ms. Townsend said, what, who should compromise, who should comprise the committee and the numbers and who should select it, but it should definitely, at least, at the very least, be a combination, if not just citizens, but city council and citizens, not just the council. And I think that, like I said, there's a sentiment in the city now that people want to be involved, and I think that's a way to show good faith with the citizens of the city, that the council cares about what the citizens want and what's important to them, and give some measure of transparency. I think that's what is very much being wanted right now by our citizens. So that's all I want to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Just name and address for the record.
Bill Wells, 446 Forest Trail, Oviedo, Florida, 32765. I just want to echo what the ladies have said, that I believe as well, that the charter should be reviewed by the citizens. I was actually here a couple of years ago when the, some elements of the charter came up for review, and it was narrowly, it was a very narrow review done by the city council. I had some comments back then, and I think, similar to what they said, I want to echo exactly what they said. I think what they said, they made very good points, with one exception, is that I'm not sure, I looked online before I came here, and the timeline that would be required to have the charter review ready for the August election is very tight. When I looked online, it said it had to be reviewed, complete and reviewed by March 6th, and today, being January 21st, that's a very tight timeline, and I don't know if a comprehensive or a good look could be done in the amount of time, that would allot, given everybody's lives and how much you have to get done in selecting people for that. So I don't know, I would necessarily apply that deadline. The November election might be a more achievable date, based on what we wanted to get done and what we want reviewed, and that's all I want to say.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Yes, sir.
Luke Linker, 1004 Lingo Circle, Oviedo. Old. So, from the city's charter itself, section three, everybody familiar with that section? Okay? In case anybody's not, including our Boy Scout sitting here, I raised four Eagle Scouts, so this is very important to me. Harmony, cooperation, and ethics in city government. It is a fundamental value of the city of Oviedo municipal government that all city-elected officials, officers, and employees shall conduct themselves in harmony, cooperation with other city-elected officials, officers, employees, and the public, and shall maintain the highest ethical standard. Mr. Pollock, you are deputy mayor.
Yes, sir.
You are the presiding officer at this council. That should really hold true to you, yes? Social media, this past weekend. Miss me yet? There was a post created, someone made a comment, they felt that a meme should be made similar to George Bush's meme, "Miss Me Yet," as president, when another president preceded him. You then chimed in and created such meme with a picture of Dominic Persempia, and said, "Miss Me Yet." You then tagged Dominic Persempia. Would you consider that following this? It's very disappointing. It is one of the reasons that I ultimately believe the council should not review its own charter for this city. You can't even respect each other. That's it.
Thanks, sir. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, sir. Just name and address for the record.
Joe Toma, 924 Woodcrest Way, 32765, and I want to chime in about the charter. I think it's time to do that, and I believe that in most cases, charter review committees meet for one year. That's the customary period of time for meeting, before the charter, the amendment of the charter is presented to voters. I'd like to add one thing, and I don't, I don't want to be argumentative, but memes are satire, and we all have thick skins, and I don't think it's a big deal, to make a funny meme about a public official.
Thanks, sir. Is there anybody else? Yes, sir. Just name and address for the record.
My name is Neil Clayton. I live at 660 Forest Cove in Oviedo. I just want to add my name to the names we've heard this evening about the whole citizen review committee being.
It is one of the reasons that I ultimately believe the council should not review its own charter for this city. You can't even respect each other. That's it.
Thanks, sir. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, sir. Just name and address for the record.
Joe Toma, 924 Woodcrest Way, 32765. And, uh, I want to chime in about the charter. I think it's time to do that. And I believe that in most cases, charter review committees meet for one year. That's the customary period of time for meeting before the charter, um, the amendment of the charter is presented to voters. I'd like to add one thing, and I don't, I don't want to be argumentative, but memes are satire, and we all have thick skins, and I don't think it's a big deal to make a funny meme about a public official.
Thanks, sir. Is there anybody else? Yes, sir. Just name and address for the record.
My name is Neil Clayton. I live at 660 Forest Cove in Oviedo. Um, I just want to add my name to the names we've heard this evening about, uh, the whole citizen review committee being public as opposed to the council itself doing it. Um, I have no problem in principle of a member of the council being on that committee, but I think it's unconscionable that the committee is only made up of council members, so we need citizens on the citizens committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none, I'm going to close public comment. And we will move on to items four through eight on the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Chairman?
Madam Mayor?
Could we, uh, discuss separately item number eight?
Is there consensus?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I was going to pull it myself.
Okay. So, we'll, uh, pull item number eight and make that eight A. Okay? So, what is the pleasure of council for all items except for item eight?
Mr. Chairman?
Actually, we'll make that item eight, sorry. It's the last one, so, but...
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Items four through seven?
Items four through seven, yes.
Second.
All right, you got a motion and a second. Um, Madam Mayor, you have the floor.
Good.
Uh, Councilman Chudnow?
Uh, I'm fine with four through seven.
All right. Any other, uh, any other comments?
No.
Good, thank you.
All right. Um, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, um, for items four through seven, signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're up to item eight. Um, let me pull that up. And, um, Mr. Cobb, do you want to give us a brief introduction?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, this is a request for the council to, uh, approve the submittal of a grant application to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for a 2020 Land and Water Conservation Fund grant for Round Lake Park, what we call Round Lake Park Extension, which is the Owens property. This property's located at the corner of Reed Avenue and County Road 419. So, it's on the west side of Reed Avenue and the north side of County Road 419. Uh, the city purchased the property a few years ago, and, uh, we received a Florida Communities Trust reimbursement grant, uh, for the purchase of the property. The property was purchased for $65,000, and, uh, the FCT grant, I believe, reimbursed us about $56,000, or maybe a little bit over. Uh, part of the FCT grant was we had a management plan, and, uh, that management plan is what was provided, uh, in your, in your packet. And basically, the management plan is to extend the boardwalk from where it ends, uh, just west of Reed Avenue, around the northern part of this property. And the idea is that, the goal has always been to get the boardwalk to extend around the circumference of the lake. And so, this would be adding a new addition to that boardwalk to bring it around the lake. Our, uh, our, our grant writer advised us of this grant. Uh, it has a tight, uh, deadline, I think it's the end of the month. And so, our policy says that we're supposed to come to council before we submit the application. And so, tonight, we're here to ask you that this resolution is to approve the submittal of the application. Uh, it's $400,000. Uh, the city's match is also $100,000, so it's $200,000 total. And that it would also authorize the, uh, the work order to the grant writer and his fee of $3,500. And so, it's, uh, recommended that the council adopt Resolution 3879-20.
All right. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Chairman?
Madam Mayor?
I move we deny this motion, Resolution 3879-20.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Madam Mayor?
Well, this sounds like a really cool thing on the surface, but really what it is is a half-off coupon. And, uh, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Pollak and, and Mr. Britton remember from when this first came up, uh, and when we accepted the money to use, use it in the purchase of, of the Owens property, I was concerned at that time that to get it, we had to promise to spend, essentially spend another $100,000 to implement, uh, this plan. And we just had half a room of people come and tell us that they want to have lights and the basketball court reopened. Nobody who is a user of this park is clamoring for a fishing pier for $25,000, a picnic shelter, uh, or sidewalk connections, or an interpretive kiosk. Uh, and, and definitely not asking for consultant, uh, $16,000 in consulting fees. I, I'm just not understanding why we would commit ourselves to spend $100,000 just because we could also get $100,000. And worst-case scenario, uh, we got $56,000 from the state. If we don't do the things that we told them we would do, we have to give them back $56,000. Um, but the cost of, of applying for the grant is $3,500, and the amount we'd have to come up with is at least 50, so it's, it's kind of a break-even thing. We can have no additional things to maintain, because clearly we are not maintaining the items that we already have, the hardscape that we already have. This proposes to bring a lot more hardscape to one of the very few, you know, I, I think it has more nature and natural spaces than most of our other parks, so that, that's my, my thoughts on it.
All right. Councilman Chudnow?
Right now, I'd like to hear Councilman Britton's thought, because he was going to pull it also, so...
Okay.
Say again?
You can go.
Oh, you're going to pass it on to me, okay. Well, I guess I'd first like to know, uh, maybe from Drew or Brian, or maybe you, Mr. Chudnow, if this is part of the ION master plan. And for those of you don't know, ION stands for Improving Our Neighborhoods, and it's focused on, on that area of the, the city. Mostly, we've done a lot for Round Lake Park and, and other areas out there.
Mr. Boa?
My recollection of the plan is that, no, it's not listed in the master plan.
That's my recollection also.
So, then, my second question is, why couldn't we put it in there? I'm, I'm thinking, why don't we do it all? You know, we can answer the gentleman's, uh, concerns. Uh, Drew, why don't we start with that? Uh, the gentleman that was up here early, I don't even see him anymore. What do we have planned for Round Lake Park, uh, in general, not just this, this piece of the property?
Okay. This was, this piece of property, of course, that we purchased, um, was part of kind of the master planning effort that we did, went through with, uh, our past consultant back in 2007, is over the, the overall master planning of, of the, all of our park system. Uh, at that time, it was AECOM, uh, used to be Gliding Jackson, it was who we did our initial, um, master planning effort with. Uh, it included with, excuse me, it included the, you know, possible purchase of the Owens property. Over the years, we had tried to purchase it several times, um, couldn't really reach an agreement with Mr. Owens. In the process of finally reaching an agreement with Mr. Owens, then FCT funding came available, which is, it was an after purchase, which we then get, uh, the money a percentage back after appraisal value. In purchasing that, of course, through FCT, there is, uh, grant requirements that you have to do a master planning effort. Uh, when I say, uh, part of that is to do, to be able to do, uh, certain things, improvements to the property. Um, one of the planning from the original master planning was if we ever was able to purchase the Owens property, to bring the boardwalk on around the lake, the fishing pier, and make that property part of Round Lake Park, and make it a, kind of like a, almost like a trailhead, because there's planned, uh, a couple parking spaces, a picnic shelter, pavilion, um, some signage, uh, the rest of the boardwalk, as well as the new fishing pier. To answer Mr. Davis's question that he brought up earlier, yes, he is currently right. Uh, y'all probably have seen, we've made notices over the last couple of weeks. We are undergoing, uh, some electrical process at Round Lake Park, which is for the betterment of the, of the park. Uh, we just finished a grant with the new tennis courts, uh, relighting, energy grant also, relight some of the existing basketball courts and tennis courts this past year. Improvements to the shade structure, which we had a very, very stressful time with the shade structure and the process of the shade structure going back up. Uh, the lift that was being used, we had a, um, hydraulic leak on the basketball courts, uh, ended up settling with the insurance company and the, uh, Hertz rental, uh, ended up, um, deciding to, uh, rebuild half the basketball court, which is the reason the basketball court has been down for a number of weeks. Uh, concrete was poured last week, uh, or about, yeah, I think about a week ago. It's got a three-week cure, cure time until we can then resurface the entire court, and then the fence line will come down. Lighting is being done, because we're actually moving the building, the small building that's in between the, uh, racquetball courts and the OCIA building. That building is being moved across the street and revamped to be a new tennis, uh, where we will be, uh, in the future, charging for use of, uh, the facility, pickleball, tennis courts, improvements that were done as part of the glass grant that we just finished this past year. And so, the reason we, the electricity on the lighting is currently off is because, uh, all the electrical, uh, was racked on that building. To be able to shut off, uh, or to be able to move the building, of course, we had to de-rack all the electrical. All the sports lighting for the basketball courts, tennis courts, were, uh, attached to that building, as well as all the rest electrical. All the main electrical power, uh, came in and went directly to that old building, because that was the original bathroom facility that was placed in the park in 1990. So, in the process of doing that, we, of course, had to work out, uh, the new, um, electrical, um, with Duke Energy. It's been a process. Duke had to come in, drop the power, drop pedestal. Now, we've got Smithson out there doing right now, building a new rack, de-racking all the electrical off the building, they're building a new rack, moving the building. Uh, we've already got all of that in the process. Permitting is being done presently, but to move the building. Uh, once the building's moved, then there's additional electrical that will be running from the new electrical rack to the new, to the moved building. And then, once we get up and, you know, operational, uh, we've got to call Duke out then, because Duke then reconnects to the pedestal after Smithson finalizes. Um, this past week, of course, yesterday, was MLK, and so, we had, um, the electrical to the building, uh, OCIE building, because we needed electricity, but we had sent out notices, uh, to the public, it's been on Facebook, as well as Recreation Facebook, City Facebook, uh, that, uh, due to electrical, de-racking and stuff, that we would be without electrical on the basketball courts, tennis courts, for, for a little bit while until further notice. And we've been making those notices to the public. So, that's where we're kind of at with that. Concerning the grant, I, I do want to make sure council understands, this grant, so basically, with the acceptance of the, uh, money for the purchase of the property, which was after the fact, yes, we do have to do improvements to the land base, which were planned, like I said, many moons ago with past, um, master planning efforts. It also, with this grant, though, in some light, how I look at it is this, we've got $100,000 to do present improvements, okay? So, by us applying for this land and water grant, we presently have the funding. It's $100,000 of free money to be able to do the initial, the improvements that we need to. Presently, as I've told Mr. Cobb, we haven't went out to bid, because we are just in design phase right now with VHB on that property to do, because we have to do permitting through St. John's and things to be able to add the additional boardwalk, fishing pier. So, to, to finalize this, um, the deadline for the grants, the 31st, we will be notified in July. Grant signing wouldn't be, take place until September. Um, you know, budget would not, I mean, we would not start this project until next budget year, come October, November, if, if we were indeed to get the grant. It's $100,000. Right now, I don't know what the funding's going to actually come in to build the remaining boardwalk, fishing pier. We just revamped the fishing pier, basically rebuilt the fishing pier as part of the, um, last grant, the old fishing pier on the west side of the lake, and it was, I'm going from memory, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood, I think, $26,000, $24,000. So, um, you know, just the fishing pier, and so, with the, the type of material that we used on the, on the boardwalk when we built it several years ago, which is recycled plastic material, it's very costly, very costly, and the pricing has went up. So, um, I looked at it that, you know, we've got funding available already, $100,000, apply for a grant. This past, Mr. Ruskey, our grant writer, had contacted me. Uh, the state had in the excess, I do believe, of, uh, I want to say $4 million in land and water funding. Um, they moved up the normal match of $200,000, which is, can make a $400,000 project. You can actually apply for $400,000 and make it into, uh, $800,000 project if you have matching funding. Of course, in this situation, we've got matching funding for $100,000. So, that's why we were requesting that from council, to look at it, to see if that's something that, you know, you would entertain for us to be able then to do the project at what we think it could end up coming in at cost, since we really haven't, you know, that, at the point right now, got an actual cost for everything.
Okay. I think you answered my question, so...
I, I know, uh...
Congratulations, too, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
Your grandfather here.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so, if I understand, the, the gentleman was talking about access to the basketball courts and the lights, those are temporary issues?
Yeah, and, and the, the one, it...
Well, just when, when you think they'll be ready?
Well, the one basketball court is, is continued, the northern basketball court is open for play, it's just not open for play, not because of lighting. Smithson was back out there this morning, as they said they would be, and they're continuing to work. The biggest thing is, uh, the additional electrical from the rack to the building won't happen until the building's moved. So, all we've got to do is have them finish the rack, get, you know, and then coordinate with Duke Energy. I'm, I'm thinking within the next week to seven, 10 days. Of course, contacting Duke and having Duke come back out is not always...
Middle of February. Is that reasonable?
Say again?
Middle of February?
Oh, I, I would think before then.
Okay. Now, that, that's, that's fine, that, that's usually what, how long it takes for that sort of stuff, but...
Yes, sir.
Is there a place they can go in the meantime? Uh, Boston Hill, or maybe the, uh...
We've got lights, we've got lights at Boston Hill, we've got lights at gymnasium.
Why don't we, why don't we get with, with the gentleman, and, uh, I know, I'm familiar with his, this group of kids, but, uh, let's just provide a place for them to go in the meantime.
Well, one of the things that we all, you know, our own basketball leagues utilize our outside courts for our own practices, too, so, uh, we'll have to take a look at that, because we don't have enough outside courts or...
Share, share, like, make some space for them. And then, I, I really would, there's a lot of stuff going on around Lake, why don't we, Mr. Chudnow, when you meet with ION, let's re, revamp the, their action plan and put this stuff in there. If they think this is something they can do, you know, I, I think if we vote for this, then it, it's no guarantee we're going to get it, but if we don't vote for it, we're not going to get it. That's the way I'm looking at this.
And, 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 council, I want you to understand, we will still come back, you know, if we do get the grant, we've still got to bring it back for, for approval of acceptance of the grant, and, uh, and because of how the funding will, you know, be finalized and everything, it would, uh, because, of course, you've got to expend the money to be able to, uh, get reimbursed, so it'd be, it'd be being done as part of next year's budget also.
Wasn't there a plan to, to put a canopy over the basketball courts?
There is, there is canopy over the...
There is?
The southern one. That's one of the things that took along, because in the initial, once the canopy initially went up, uh, there were holes in the canopy structure. Uh, canopy structure had to be taken back down, sent all the way to text the fabric...
Okay, I thought you were talking about the playground area where you had the problem.
No, this was the basketball court...
Okay.
This past year.
All right, and that's done. Okay, well, um, press on, but, uh, see if we can find an, an alternative place for them for a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
That's all I have.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Boa?
Yeah, Drew, I just have, what is an interpretive kiosk?
Excuse me?
What is the interpretive kiosk?
Oh, it's basically just a kiosk, it's a information center. Uh, we, we have them somewhere parts, they come in trifolds, and when, this one's probably going to be a, when I say trifold, it's going to be a, a, a three-system where you can put information. Um, one area will have a map of Round Lake. The plan is to have a map, so that if someone's coming to that park, parking at that area, they would know where to go on and walk the boardwalk, and what's in the other area on the western side of the, uh, lake, as far as the basketball courts, tennis courts, playgrounds, and things like that. So, it's just kind of interpretive-type thing, that where people can look at, get information about our, our programs, flyers, and things like that, that will be there also.
And I've got a question, too. How, how much flexibility is there in doing this versus whatever the people who come to ION may want? Because I, I get the feeling that maybe a, a second fishing pier, and I'm getting, is this the second fishing pier? Because we already have the one.
Yes, a fishing pier on the opposite side of the lake, yes.
Okay, so, second fishing pier. I get the feeling they'd rather have another shade structure and more basketball courts than a, you know, if we're looking about, looking at cement, it's probably about the same amount of cement to do sidewalk and picnic tables as it is to just do another basketball court, so if we, can we, do we have that flexibility?
No, the thing is... No, the thing is with, with grants, with FCT, the grant, it's specific to the property that you've, with this is the Owens property.
It has to be.
So, the improvements have to go on the Owens property. Any, any management plan, it's just like Shane Kelly and Riverwoods Park, tied to those FCT management plans is improvements that you have to do to those facilities. You cannot move around and do improvements to other park facilities. Even though it's connected, yeah, you can't do it in another area of the park.
And just for the benefit of everybody out here, this, this would be across from the gas station on a busy, loud road, that we would be putting these, this fishing pier and picnic tables? Okay, so, that's, that is kind of where it's at. So, Reed Road and 426.
It's on the corner, yes.
By the gas station, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I have a question. I just want to clarify that the problem that the young man was speaking about, about the electrical issue is no way connected to lack of money, it's just that there have been some problems and you're trying to overcome those problems in order to?
Well, it's one of those things where I kind of tell staff sometimes, you've got to wreck things to make things better. In this situation, because of how the electrical to the entire park was connected to the, the building that we're moving, the process of that, you've got to remove all the electrical, the electrical coming overhead from the outside source comes in. That's one of the things we had done earlier in the year was we had another electrical pole put in. We hesitated on putting the pedestal in at the time because we didn't know for sure if we were going to be able to move the building. So, once we were able to see that we were going to be able to move the building, then we went through the process with Duke Energy to get the pedestal put at the, into the, the new pole. And then, by then, then we had to get pricing for the electrical, you know, got to go out and get three quotes for electrical, which we did. Smithson won the bid, and then, we've been in the process of doing that. The other thing, process is also, we've been waiting, to be quite honest, with Smithson. They've been quite busy. This project, you know, was hoped to have started before Christmas, but because of their schedule, they weren't able to get out until after the new year. Yeah. And it's, and it's a process doing it, it's not lack of funding. The purchase order's in place and, and that process will be done. It's, you know, it's, it's the same thing with our pickleball and things like that. We're working through those details as far as, we're still not open for pickleball use because the, the courts are portable.
Right.
Portable nets, don't have staffing in the park presently right now to where we can just put nets out and, or because they can end up walking out and nets are not inexpensive. And so, the whole, the whole process of this is we're going to end up having staff in the park to be able, you know, to supervise and run additional programming and things like that for the future.
And it looks like, just, I, I remember when the park was first started, compared to what you've accomplished in the last, I don't know how many months, that it's going to be a premier park once you complete all the renovation. It looks fantabulous, I don't know if that's a word or not.
Sounds like a good word to me.
And, and maybe the young man didn't realize the way, when the park initially started compared to what it is now. And when you move the building and plus when the mural is finished and.
Mm-hmm.
And it's just a matter of time. Sometimes we get so impatient, we want things done, right, in a hurry. But, once it is done, it sounds like and looks like it's going to be a fantastic location.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just, just real quick, I just wanted to, to clarify. So, the money that's in, in this grant would need to be used on the property that was, that was purchased in that corner.
Yes, sir.
Can't be used anywhere else.
No, sir.
Okay, so, so if we wanted to improve that property and make the continuation of the, the trail all the way around the park, this would be the, the, what I would consider the best way to, to, to get that funding for that part of the project?
Yeah, one of the things I do want, want to say is that this is going to bring the existing where the boardwalk stops short of Owens property, it will bring it to the Owens property to the fishing pier. It's not coming on around the lake. In the master plan, it does show, in our master plan efforts, it does show boardwalk completely coming across the lake back into where we own property on the opposite side of the lake, which would be south of the fishing pier, existing fishing pier. It does not accomplish that. That's another whole project for another whole discussion, another whole day.
Okay.
Yeah. But, it does finish the boardwalk coming in from where it ends in octagon presently down to the lake and make it a new fishing pier.
And it utilizes the land that we.
Utilizes the land, yeah. Puts a, a pavilion there where people can sit. The whole idea is not so much to bring traffic to that area, although there is being planned to have a couple of parking spaces where people could park there, possibly ride their bike, walk the trail, that type of thing. It's more about people coming to the park, walking from the park to that park and enjoying a picnic, whatever, fishing, then going back around the boardwalk to the, to the other side of it.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else for them? No? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cobb, would you like to add anything on that?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. Is there any more discussion on the item?
What's, what's the motion? What does a yes vote for the motion mean?
The, the motion, the, a yes vote, the mo, would be for, to deny the, the resolution.
A no vote would be to deny the resolution.
No. A, a yes vote would be to deny, because a motion is to deny. So, if you, if you, okay.
So, a no vote is to approve the grant application?
A no, well, no vote is just to deny that motion.
To deny the motion is.
You would need another.
We got to go back?
Oh, okay, okay. Let's go through the process.
All right.
Well, listen, I'll be clear on that.
All right. So, we have a motion on the floor to deny resolution number 3879-20. All those in favor?
Hold on a minute, let me just be clear.
A motion to. Deny resolution.
Motion is to deny.
Motion to say no to the grant.
Yes.
To the grant application.
No, I want to say yes. I'm sorry, forgive me.
If you, if you would like to deny the grant application.
Well, how about this, I withdraw my motion to deny.
That makes it easy.
Makes it easier.
Okay, all right. So, what is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the resolution as presented.
Got a motion?
A second.
You got a motion and a second? Mr. Britton, any? We, Mr. Justice, Councilman Chudnow?
Well, seeing that there's already the $100,000 in the, in the budget for improvements in the capital fund for this property, that money's still going to be used for the improvements, it's just the possibility of getting another $100,000 to improve the improvements. So, I, I would say it's worth a shot to get the money. And there's no guarantee we are going to get the grant. So, it's worth, it's worth a try.
May I say?
Plans can be changed, I just don't think we should spend the first $100,000 just because it gives us a chance to get a second $100,000. Completing, especially when it means, and I didn't know till, till this evening, I didn't know that it wouldn't complete the boardwalk all the way around the lake. That's the part that I think the community is interested in. The other stuff, I don't want to eat a picnic on the side of 426. And I, I don't know anybody else who does.
All right. Councilwoman Smith?
It sounds like a wonderful plan. The parks, I mean, they've done a lot of things with that park from the first moment it was created, and I could tell you, I mean, a lot about it, I've seen it firsthand, and it sounds like a, a nice plan.
Mr. Cobb, the, do we have to spend the $100,000 initially to, for the chance of getting the other, other $100,000? Or do we, can we put in the grant application if it, if it doesn't, if we don't receive the grant, then we can kind of come back to the drawing board on it?
My understanding is that it's, it's a reimbursement grant.
Okay.
Okay. And so, it's, if you take the local match of 100 and then the state funding of 100, it's a $200,000 grant is what it is total.
Okay.
Okay. If the city spent $100,000, then you would get reimbursed 50.
Okay.
Is how it would work. If the city spends $200,000, you get reimbursed $100,000. And so, what we looked at was, well, we have $100,000 in expenses, so why not ask for $100,000 and see what we get?
Okay.
We think we have a good chance of getting some funding. But, you're right, there's, Councilman's right, there's no guarantee that we'll get funded. But, I will say this, our grant writer's actually pretty darn good at what he does and has been very successful for us over the past years. And so, we, we feel pretty confident that our request will be approved.
Okay. Now, would this, this work be impacted by the future road widening project of 419?
It shouldn't. The only thing that it could possibly impact would be like the, the front engine along 419. I don't know, I don't know if it would be a total take or not. The one thing about this property, it's not very deep. That's the one thing about it. And so, putting the boardwalk with a possible gazebo on it, that's really about all you're going to get. You're not going to get a whole lot of stuff on this property, it's only a half an acre. And, like I said, the lack of depth, that was one of the things about it was that you really couldn't develop it privately because there wasn't really any room to put anything on it, not even a home. And so, there's the possibility that a right-of-way taking may need a portion of the property. I don't anticipate that it would be a full take, but, you know, that's so far down the road that I don't know, I couldn't tell you. I mean, we've still got to get Phase Two done before we can move on to Phase Three.
Understood.
You know, so, but, you know, like I said, that, that would be way down the road. I mean, it's possible.
All right, thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 3879-20. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries four to one. All right, we have no public hearings, no, no first readings. We're on to resolutions. Item number 11, resolution number 3875-20, site development order number 511-20 for Dr. Lawton's office. Mr. Cobb, can you give us an introduction, please?
All right, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor. This is a request to approve site development order number 511-20, Dr. Lawton's office. If you will all remember, you recently approved the architectural design order for this project. It is a dental office, about 6,000 square feet, lots four and five of the Jolson Office subdivision. It's located in Althea Woods. The property is, the land use is planned unit development, the zoning is planned unit development. The majority of this development is on lot number five. Lot number four will be mostly at a future time. One of the interesting things about this subdivision, we did the subdivision back in 1998, and it was one of the first commercial subdivisions where it was actually set up with cross-access easements within, in between the different lots and also across the different lots. And that's one of the things that's been a challenge on this development was that they had to be able to locate the building within those easements. And so, it, it caused the need for some deviations locating the building within those easements. And one is, one of the ones is parking spaces to allow some parking spaces in front of the building, to allow five of them. There are some, there's a deviation regarding trees within the parking lot islands. Some of the parking lot islands, we weren't able to get a full eight feet, and so, it wouldn't be supportive of a, of a large tree. So, we, there's, there's a deviation regarding the number of large trees within the parking lot islands, also a deviation on the width of a few of the parking lot islands to reduce them from the eight feet. The other one, once again, getting back to those pre, predetermined cross-access easements, we had to shift the building to the east. And so, what that did was it caused an impact to the buffer yard on the east side to accommodate the air conditioning system as well as the roof overhang. Along the length of the building, the buffer yard will shrink down to six feet, and then it'll go back to 10 feet. So, on, outside of the buildings, the buffer yard's 10 feet, but it'll shrink down to six feet. The staff, the staff reviewed the application, they reviewed the requests for deviations, proposed mitigations, there are additional trees being, being planted, there's a heritage tree that could have been removed, that's going to be preserved, and there's some other items that they're doing as well. And so, they reviewed that based on the total package of the design and working within the Land Development Code. The staff does recommend approval of the site development order. It's recommended that City Council adopt resolution number 3875-20.
All right, I have no request to speak. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak about this item? No? Okay, closed public comment. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Chairman?
Madam Mayor?
I move we adopt resolution 3875-20.
Got a motion and a second? Madam Mayor?
I'm so glad they're saving that heritage tree. And I do have a question for staff. Are, are they going to be protecting the roots in some way with some pervious parking spaces near there? It might not have gotten quite that far along.
Well, they have to protect the, the roots, but I don't know about pervious, so I'll have to check that.
Protecting them for the short term is, is really great, but if they're paved over, that, that would make it really hard to keep that tree alive long-term. Unless they, like if one half is open, I couldn't, I couldn't tell on this little sketch here.
So, the tree that they're going to preserve is on the west side, right? It's this one, it's the heritage tree. The two parking spaces are, it's going to be future, so we can check that with the site plan, but we have the applicant's representative here, so he may be able to answer your question.
All right, thank you.
Just take your name and address for the.
Good evening. Bill Hockins Smith, Florida Engineering Group, 5127 South Orange Avenue, Orlando. The 30-inch tree is in front of the building, close to the right-of-way, so we're not developing that area. We do have future parking spaces over, on lot four. That's a 34-inch tree, and we're just not to that point yet to develop that site.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And I, and I'm sure if you're saving them, it's because you want the trees to stay.
Yes, we do, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Are you good? Councilwoman Smith?
Yes, I have the same concerns. So, I talked with Mr. Reed, and they did a lot of, made a lot of effort to keep the trees and everything. And did a lot of mitigation this, to do that.
Yes.
So, and I mean, a lot, I guess, from what I understand, you did, made a lot of effort to make sure the trees were saved, so, I'm good.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Britton?
I guess I have just one question, maybe Teresa, you can help me out here. I'm looking at the overhead, and it seems like there's a residential street to the, I guess I'll say the east. Do we, are we maintaining a good buffer between, it looks like there may be another commercial building in between this property.
To our east is kind of here.
Yeah.
It's what?
We're adjacent to kinder care.
Okay, okay. All right, I, I was just curious as to the buffers. What about buffers to the south?
There's an existing stormwater pond there, and we are landscaping that.
Okay. And that meets all our requirements?
So, to the east, we are, they are requesting deviation. So, it's along the building to allow for the ACs to be placed over there and to have some overhang. Because we allow overhangs on setbacks, but we don't allow on buffers. So, they had to request this deviation. And this is, as you can see, the site is kind of narrow, right, and long to have those two buildings, and the building is already very narrow. So, this was the best they could do to fit on the site, and it's a small deviation. So, they are, they are adjacent to them, it's another commercial building, so it's, you know, less of an issue of a buffer that, you know, it's not, we're not buffering against residential.
Okay. Just checking. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Britton, this is one of the last remaining lots of that commercial area along Althea Woods Boulevard, between Althea Woods Boulevard and Canterbury. This is one of the last few lots in that area.
All right. Councilman Shudna?
I'm good.
All right. I think they really tried to mitigate all this, all these deviations and trying to preserve trees. And this building is actually, when it does, I think we had pictures of it at the last council meeting. It's to look just like the Lawton House. Dr. Lawton actually is a descendant of the Lawton family, so he's really trying to do a lot of work to preserve that heritage and history here. So, I think that, you know, I think that they did a lot of work on this, and it looks good. So, let's see. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Let me catch up here. All right. We're on to discussion items. The first item is the city charter review. Mr. Cobb, would you provide an introduction, please?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If you'll remember back at your January 6 meeting, you gave the consensus to have a discussion item at tonight's meeting regarding charter review. This is something that does come from our charter, Section 3.11. It does say that it's a five-year review of the charter. And what it states is that at least once every five years after the adoption of the charter, or more often, if the City Council deems it necessary or desirable, City Council shall appoint a charter review committee to review the city charter and recommend additions, deletions, or changes to the City Council for its consideration. And 2020 is coming up on that five-year review. And so, we did contact the supervisor elections. We asked them about both the November election and as well as the August election to see what would be the dates that we would need to have to get something placed on that ballot. And so, we provided those to you. Yes, for the August election, the deadline to get it to the supervisor is June 1, which, one of the things we have to do, we have to translate everything into Spanish. And so, all the different dates down through there, you have to adopt an ordinance. It will require the adoption of an ordinance, which would be a reading and a public hearing. So, the committee would have to be completed by, what we're looking at would be March the 6th, so that we could get March 20th, have the, have you give us direction March 20th, what to put into the ordinance, so that then we could get on the first reading on April 6th. And if it's the November election, then the supervisor said we've got to be done by August 21st. We have to get it to him by then, which would have the committee being completed with their work by May 18th, so that on June 1, you could give us direction what to put into the, to the ordinance. We'd do the readings on June 15th and July 6th. And so, we, tonight, we're asking for your direction on the charter review and the type of committee you'd like to have. If you do do a citizen committee, I agree with Ms. Townsend. I would like to go out and find a facilitator for the committee. And also, if you do do a committee, then obviously I would recommend that you put it out, have citizens to make application for that. And so, we're here to assist you and how to go forward. We just need a little bit of direction regarding how you'd like to do this.
Who would like to start?
I'd love to see it be all citizens. So, and it looks like it's not very realistic to get it on the primary ballot. So, given that it would be November, even though that is a little bit farther out, it does make sense to, up at the top, there's mention of given 30 days, or at some point, I thought I saw 30 days to notice the meeting, or maybe that was in a memo, some other memo I was looking at. But there's more than 15 people in the crowd here tonight. I think we can find 15 people very quickly if that were the number to be batted about. And I think it would be interesting to, and I don't know if there's, I don't think there's rules in the charter about this, to consider people who are not yet 18. We've got a lot of members of the Oviedo Youth Advisory Council back there. And I had an opportunity to serve on the charter review committee when I was pretty young. I was probably 22 years old, 22, 23. And I think I read that thing more thoroughly and had more thoughts on it than half of the more seasoned members of the committee. So, I'd really like everybody to consider whether that might be an okay thing to throw in the mix. All right.
I'll go next. I have no issue with the charter review. I do think that trying to hit the primary, if you're looking for a full review of the full charter, that's kind of unrealistic to have that done. A citizens committee is fine. I think 15, for lack of a better number, isn't bad. I mean, we can discuss other numbers, but you want enough input, but you don't want it too big because then nothing gets accomplished. As far as, I do like Mr. Cobb's suggestion about opening up and having applications, and then each council member picks whatever number we decide to be on it and having youth on there. I don't have an issue with it. I do think that there should be a voting age, though. And the only reason I say that is that they're the ones going to be voting on the charter.
Well, this is true. What about like, like an ad hoc committee member, just to offer perspective? Maybe that, that might be a...
I wouldn't mind that, but not a voting member, because if we're going to change the charter, then you want people voting who are going to vote on. And the only other reason, the only other thing, I would say regardless of age, is that they're registered voters, because they have the input on the charter. They're going to be voting on it. To have somebody who's not able to vote have some discussion on the charter, kind of is, I don't know, it doesn't seem appropriate.
Okay. One thing that I'd like to express is that I think trying to reach any of these deadlines, either for the primary or general election, is, I just don't think it's doable if we're going to do a good job. My suggestion would be, you know, yes, form the committee, but give them enough time so that they can do a very good job on it and come back with some good results. So, I don't, and the bottom line is, I don't see it appearing on the November or August elections.
Okay. Councilman Britton?
Well, I think I'm in line. I think it's going to be hard to get it on the November ballot, looking at the schedule. I don't have any issues with having it a citizens committee. I guess I have to clarify, are these meetings going to be closed or they're going to be open? So, I don't understand why the high school kids can't attend the meetings and have their inputs put in anyway.
I think they could. They're subject to sunshine, correct? Mr. Cobb?
I believe they would be, because you would create the committee through resolution, and so it would be an extent, Mr. Hawke can correct me, but it would be an extension of you. And so, therefore, they would be subject to sunshine.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. You're all invited to attend. And put your inputs in.
I don't have any issues with that. 15's a good number. I'd prefer we get applications in and set a date when we're going to make the recommendations. And it's still a tight schedule. May 18th is going to come really quick, so we've got to move out.
Mr. Chairman? I just wanted clarification from Mr. Cobb. You said they would be an extension of us and subject to the sunshine. Well, specifically, what does that mean? An extension of us is, I guess, the word now?
Well, basically, you're appointing the committee, okay? And so, you're giving them duties to review this, to review the charter, okay? It's something you could do yourself, but you're saying, no, we want this committee to do that. So, they're an extension. They are, they are an appointed board. And so, when you appoint a board, you are subject to the sunshine law. When you appoint a board, they are also, they're subject to the same sunshine law when you appoint them.
And I guess that's a good point. I think the last time we had a charter committee, there was some violations, possible violations of committee members cross-talking outside the committee.
Could be. I wasn't seeing...
We need to make those cautionary notes.
But that's how it happens, because since the council is appointing the board, then they become subject to the same laws the council has.
A question, I probably know the answer to this, if they're an extension of us, once the recommendations are made, do the recommendations come back to the council prior to being placed on the ballot?
Yes, ma'am. What would happen is the committee would do their, do their work, and actually, Mary could probably explain better than I can, because she actually served on the committee. The committee makes a set of recommendations. Those recommendations come to the City Council. The City Council then decides what recommendations that they wish to send onto the ballot. If you'll notice, the residents tonight that spoke said, we want you to send everything, whatever they recommend. Send it on, don't change it. But the council is actually the final say-so on what gets placed on the ballot. So, you tell us, okay, we want to place these items on the ballot. The city attorney would then prepare an ordinance, calling for an election, and then listing out the various amendments to the charter, and that would be placed onto the ballot. I believe also the ballot language is also part of that ordinance. And so, then you would go through the ordinance adoption process, like I talked about, would be first reading, public hearing. And then once the ordinance is adopted, then it gets converted into the ballot language, and that's a whole new thing that I'm not very good at. All I know is it's 75 words, and it's very difficult. And that you develop the ballot language, and then it goes to the supervisor of elections. So, yes, you will have probably the key role in all of this before it gets, it gets to the electorate. So, Mayor, did I hit?
That's pretty much spot on. But if I could add a little bit of history, the year I was on it, the commission, the charter review committee came back with some recommendations. Council didn't like it, so they changed it to what they would like better, merged them all into one thing, and then some of the members formed a PAC to try to influence the outcome of the vote on the charter. So, I would hope that we could all commit that we're not going to do that again, because that was not a positive thing in our town, I don't think.
Mr. Chairman, just another clarification. And so, if we decide, okay, once the committee makes the recommendations and they appear on the ballot, we determine, I know Ms. Townsend was saying about things being bundled. I remember, I forgot what year that was when they had, when they did bundle all the things, but it still was a grueling process. So, one of the reasons I did not want it to appear on this November's election is because of the presidential election, because I think it's going to be just absolutely crazy. I would like the committee to be able to take their time and then be placed on the, and I know, anyway, and to be, take their time, work through everything, and present us with something, and then be placed on the ballot. I don't know if there, is there a special ballot? No. It would be placed, the next ballot we're looking at, if we don't do November, is when?
It would probably be August 2021.
But wouldn't it, that would be an additional special election, so we would not normally have one in August 2021. It would instead be November 2021.
So, I guess it would be November 2021, unless there's some other special election that's being done by the county. Here's the one thing about it, is that from an expense standpoint, you try to hit, if there's an August ballot, you try to hit the August ballot. If you try to hit, if there's a November ballot, you try to hit the November ballot. Well, there's always a November ballot, so. But anytime you do something outside of this, the city foots the bill for it. And so, if you can get onto an existing ballot, you know, the one that's been, it's covered under that, under those. The city doesn't have a special expense for it. So, that's one of the things that we try to do, is we try to work within the confines of what's, when's the general election of that year. And sometimes there's a special, it's like, there's a special election this year in March. And so, we knew there was no way we were going to make it on that one, but that's why we didn't even bring it up to you. But there is one this year. It would have been available to us, you know, last, last year. But, so, I mean, that's what we try to do. We try to cut the costs as much as we can, rather than having a special election just for that one thing. It's, from a cost standpoint, it's better to go with a general election. You're right. There's going to be, well, there's two thoughts. There's, like you said, that ballot's liable to be cused.
Yes. I...
The other thought of that is, there's also going to be a lot of people that will be voting in it as well. So, it gives an opportunity for, because the large ballot's going to draw people, you know. So, it's one of those. But there's always the thought of voter fatigue.
Yes.
If our, if our questions are at the end and they stop before they get there, that's a concern as well.
Exactly. Exactly.
So, there's all kinds of things that go into this, and that's why we always work with the supervisor of elections to try to make it so that, one, we do something that's cost feasible, but two, also to make sure that we're working within, you know, we work within the existing system. So...
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
Two things. I know that some of the people coming up on top of the charter review said they don't want the council to change the wording. Well, like Mr. Cobb said, it can only be 75. There's a word limitation, and there's legalese that have to be. So, the wording is, may change, but the idea is what needs to remain the same. But that wording may change because of omitting the necessities of the ballot. As far as the timeframe, if we're going to do a complete review of the charter, I hate to put that really strict timeframe, because then things get missed, things get brushed over. And if we do have to wait till November 2021 for the charter review to go to the, on the ballot, to do it right, I think that's not a bad thing. If there's nothing extremely pressing on there that needs to come before, I'd rather let the committee do an extremely good job in reviewing it and having it done correctly instead of rushing through it.
And may I add something also? And for future, we were probably a year out from the time we are ready to do a review, we would start preparation so that we wouldn't be in this situation right now like we are. So, there, again, so like in the fourth year, we would be preparing for the charter review so that at the fifth year, it's done. I don't know if that makes sense or not.
Well, there is also the possibility that it, well, first off, it's only 20 pages long. That's not that hard. You sit down, you crunch through it, you come up with your hit list. All 15 people come together. I just think people procrastinate no matter what the task is, and it's not too much to say, we're going to appoint them in February. You've got a three-month window. Knock it out, because people are busy. People don't want to drag it out. And that'll get us where we need to be for the November timeline. There is a possibility, even though we've asked three times before about extending terms, and the voters keep saying no, that may be something that the committee comes up with and asks again, which could mean that there may not be an election. Well, no, there should be. If this comes up, everybody, I hope you will not try to extend anybody's term. I was voted in for a two-year term, not a three-year term, to try to level things up. Please do not tinker with that. So, if it means that people have to have one-year terms to catch up to go even numbered years, if that's what the citizens want, so be it. But, you know, I guess it could come in a different configuration, and there could potentially not be a 2019 election. Though I don't think that should be, that's not the right outcome. There should be a 2019, because that's, y'all know where I stand on that.
All right. Is there other, anything else? So, for me, I like the 15 members. Each member appoints three applicants to the committee, getting applications. I do agree with Councilman Shudna that, you know, they should be registered voters and of voting age. But I think that we should shoot for that May 18 recommendation date. But I would, I would leave it up to the committee to kind of, if they can't come up with the recommendations or they can't do a thorough review by May 18, then they can, you know, come back and ask, you know, ask for an extension and move it to the next period. But I would leave it up to the committee to determine whether they can, they can meet the expectations of the 18th. Let's see. I'm trying to think what else. You know, I, each item that they come up with would be a separate ordinance and separate ballot item. Is that correct, Mr. Cobb?
That would be up to the council. Yes, you can treat each, you'll only adopt one ordinance, but you can place each item as an individual question.
Okay. So, it's one ordinance, but then it can be each individual question. Okay. All right. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with what was discussed. I don't know. Does anybody else have any other comments on that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Again, I reiterate my reservations for us rushing through this. I know people mean well sometimes, but, and also what we don't want to do is, we don't want to create something that's, that's going to backfire us in terms of people being able to meet a goal. We just... If we just stretch it out for a time period and allow the committee to meet at their leisure, I think that's the best course of action. I don't see anything to be gained by rushing it. Matter of fact, I think it's, it can be catastrophic. So, those are my concerns.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What do y'all think about allowing somebody who will be eligible to vote by the time they might be on the ballot, being able to, just throwing it out there?
I would still go along if you're on the, on the committee from the start.
From the start, okay.
From the start.
Just wanted to clarify that point.
Now, you know, and I'm not, if the Charter Review Committee adopts their own, for lack of a better word, rules for their meetings, and they have a time for public input or in writing from public input, and someone, regardless of ways, wants to give that input, I have no issue with that. But making that final recommendation to the council should be someone of voting age who is a registered voter.
That does make sense.
All right. So, I think the biggest discussion is, do we want to shoot for this May 18 deadline for the recommendations, or do we want to push it, you know, and panel the committee now, but, but push it to the next, the next election, you know, within the city, which as of right now would probably be next November?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would kind of agree with you that we, we seat the committee as quickly as logistically we can and allow them to work through that. And if they can have a full review without rushing through it and make those recommendations by the May 18 date, fine and good. If they can't, on their own thought process of rushing or, then we, we push it out and leave that, and leave that up to the committee.
One question, if I could. Mr. Cobb, we have to advertise for, or a facilitator has to be appointed, right?
That was going to be one of my, I'm writing questions to you. That was going to be one of them. Do you wish for us to go and find a facilitator?
What's the time period of that? If we decide we want that to happen, how long would it take?
I, I'm not really sure. This will be the first time that I'm going to be searching for one, but I would hope that we would be able to bring you one back within at least 30 days, I would hope. I'm hoping that the, it's really going to depend on what the fees are. If the fees are such that if I'm calling around and getting, getting quotes and I find out the fees are such that it's going to require me to go out and do a RFP process, that could be problematic enough itself. But my hope is, is that I, it's like the mayor, the mayor mentioned to me, you know, it's called Florida League of Cities, and see, there's a list of folks that they have. We have a relationship with the University of Central Florida, Masters of Public Administration Program, that we might be able to tap into a, one of the professors there. So, I mean, we've got some other ideas, that we may be able to do something quickly within our purchasing policies that would allow us to bring it to you, hopefully. I mean, the goal would be to bring you the facilitator approval the night you seat the committee. That would be the goal. So, it's really going to depend on how much they want to charge us, to be honest.
And then, we, we would decide how long it would take for us to appoint the people that we are going to recommend. Would that entail us advertising for those positions so that all of the citizens can have that opportunity? If we have to advertise, is there a period of time that we have to advertise in order to get that accomplished?
That was one of the other questions that I was going to have for you, how long you want us to advertise for. Yes, the city clerk would put out a notice to the public. We'll obviously use the website, we'll use all our social media, we'll use Elvito in the news to get out the word, to say, hey, we're accepting applications for Charter Review Committee. And this council would tell us, okay, we want to advertise for how long. And based on whatever your direction is, then we would, we would, you know, say, okay, we're accepting applications through this date. And I guarantee you, if we say 5 o'clock on a certain date, someone will show up at 5:15. I guarantee it. But something this big, normally, you would be looking anywhere, you'd probably be looking around 30 days. I think, yes, Mayor's right, I did put something in the, in the agenda in random things. Normally, you would seek, you know, give 30 days for people to do it. You could shorten that timeframe if you wanted to.
All right. Anything else?
I think 12 days gives people enough, either you care about it or you don't, you're paying attention or you don't, or you're not. And 12 days would let us appoint everybody and potentially find a facilitator by the first meeting in February. They could then, I think it would be sensible to just look at a calendar right now and say, well, how do we, how do we get to where it may be achievable going at a normal speed by May? So, if the first meeting were, as an example, let's say Thursday, February 6, and they were going to meet twice a month, perhaps, or, yeah, let's make it February 13. So, they have that, they'd find out if they're on the committee, February 3, the first meeting would be over seven, it would 10 days to read 20 pages. I think, I think that's a reasonable thing, to come up with your initial hit list of what you'd like to accomplish by then. They could discuss what, you know, narrow it down to what they want to do, meet again on the 27th, and then you've got two meetings in March, and you can avoid spring break somehow in there. Another two to three, because there's a, looks like there's five Thursdays in April. So, there could be another three meetings in, so you've got two, four, seven total meetings, and that allows by the first meeting of May, everything to, I mean, I think that's enough time. That's, you could even say it's just three pages of the charter per meeting to hash out in a 90-minute session each time.
I'm, you know, I agree. I feel like the timeline is doable to get it to May. I think that they can do a thorough review in the, in the time allotted if we can get the applications put together and put on the February 3 agenda. Is that, is that time too tight for you to get it on the February 3?
Well, let's look at February 3. That's a good question. February 3, we're giving everything to you next Wednesday.
Do they, does all of that have to be in our packet by the, you know, can it just come to this, that day?
I would think you'd want it beforehand, so you have a chance. Well, you get a lot of them. You get a lot of them, you want to have a chance to go through it and read through all the, granted, the application forms are usually only one page.
But even if it was like till Friday, so if you, you said you could turn in things as late as the 31st, that still gives, you know, eight days roughly. Because all you do is you pop it online tomorrow. Easy peasy.
The 31st, you only get three days. Five, yes. You'd only have three days to review.
To review, that's okay. I can, I can read through a lot in three days. If you get the rest of the agenda on Wednesday and we don't get the rest until Friday.
I think the 17 is probably the realist.
Yeah, the, we don't have any other meetings in February or anything, do we?
No, you just, right now, well, you do have a CRA meeting coming up. Yeah, others than that, 3rd and 17.
Okay.
And then we could just knock it out, two in February anyway, be, you come out the gate the 20th and then the 27th. I think the seven-meeting trajectory, that's what makes it.
Well, I think that that's, that's up to the committee to decide what their, their meeting schedule would be. They, they need to set their own rules and their own, their own timeframe and, you know, and the goal of meeting the May 18 deadline.
That's tricky, though. If you say, we need 15 people, and you guys, after you're appointed, all get to vote on what, which one of the seven days of the week you're going to meet on, it would probably be beneficial to at least create a structure of, you know, here's what's expected of you if you are to join this committee. And if you finish sooner, great. And if, if not, then we will have to kick it, kick it past November.
Well, I think that any committee that you form, you give them, here's, here's your, here's when your recommendation needs to get by. And like, like Mr. Pollak said, if the group feels we can knock this out by meeting twice a month, which they're almost going to have to meet in order to get it done, I, I think by choosing people that we believe are going to be, have that initiative to get it done and give us a good product, or we wouldn't be looking at appointing them. So, I think they will amongst themselves come up with a good meeting schedule and, you know, you give them the due date, and I think they'll come through.
We probably need at least the first date picked out.
Well.
Because how are they going to decide when they're going to meet if we don't have the first one picked out and say, you know, if you can't clear your schedule on this date, you don't get to have input on the future meeting dates? It looks like it's heading towards February 17. So, are there any recurring meetings that happen here on a Thursday? Could we just, you know, suggest that that be the first?
I don't think there are any nightly meetings on Thursdays, to be honest. I'm not, I'm not perfectly, I'm not exactly clear, but I think most are meetings are Monday and Tuesday.
That's what I was thinking. And Wednesday, that's kind of a rough day, but Thursday, then you start to feel fun again, so.
So, just not Fridays.
Yeah, that can't be Friday, and Wednesday's kind of rough, so that leaves Thursday, and there aren't any meetings here anyway. So, that seemed to me like a natural date to.
Honestly, for me, I'm, I'm fine with having the first meeting on the, on the 20th after we, we appoint the pan, or the committee. And, and then, you know, let them take it from there on how often they want to meet, if Thursdays work for them. I mean, we can set that first date and let them go from there with their moderator and, you know, and like I said, you know, have the 18th as the deadline to, to come back to us. What are the thoughts on that?
I feel much better having that first date set. Thank you.
Is there a consensus for that? The 20th?
Consensus for the 20th? Yeah. You can pick any date. We don't even have a facilitator yet, and we don't know what their schedule is. How long do you think that will take, Brian?
Well, I'll try, I'll do everything I can to have something on you for you on the 17th.
The 17th of February?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That gives them three days to?
You may have to execute contract that night.
Yeah. Gives them three days to get prepared. You know, I, I kind of agree with Mrs. Smith here, where we might be going too fast. I would go get a facilitator, set up a meeting maybe the 5th of March, let them go do their forming and storming in March. It's going to, it's not like they're all going to get together and have their kumbaya, kumbaya moment at the first meeting. They're going to, they're going to have to do some, some working together to get where they want to go. And let them work through March and then start scrubbing it in April and give it to us in May. And if we don't make it, we'll go for next year. You know, I don't know if we ought to rush this through. Let them go look at it and take a good stab at it and give us their best effort.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
That's one thing, Councilman Smith and I spoke about this issue. One of the things in our, as we were going through it, the charter says that we'll review it, and that recommendations will be made, but it doesn't give you a timeframe to say, you must, you must adopt these changes by this certain date. So, you do, it does give you flexibility. It says you have to review it, and if you find anything, recommendations will be made. But it gives you the flexibility as far as you decide when, when you bring it, bring it to the ballot, so.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, just one more thing I'd like to add. The important thing is that we've agreed that there will be a charter review. That's the important thing. And the only thing, again, I, we just voiced it again, my opinion is, we're going to do a charter review, either we're going to rush it through for no particular reason, or we'll take our time, because there may be some things you want to change, but we want to make sure that they are done in expeditious manner, or not, not expeditious, I don't want to go too fast, but a consistent, steady manner. And if we don't have to rush it through, then maybe people will be able to think more about how we want change, if they do want change. But just rushing it through like this, I mean, I, I don't see any reason for it. But anyway, congratulations that we've decided there will be a charter review. Yes.
And it will be made up of citizens?
Yes, it will be.
The, one, one other item that did get brought up during public comment was not just, not just, you know, voting age citizens, but there was also another item that was brought up about former elected officials or city employees. I don't know if there's thoughts on that, or?
That was, that hadn't occurred to me till it was brought up here, and that's a very interesting, and I think a positive addition to make, to just limit it to people who are not, that too close to being in this spot. Because we don't want to create the rules for ourselves or have, like, it's just, there's something weird about it.
Well, the one suggestion was either elected officials or staff members less than five years out.
Yeah.
And to me, that's.
That's, that's a good amount of space.
That's a good number.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to read the applications and pick. I don't care where they come from myself.
Okay.
And that's a question right there. If we are to make those kinds of rules, then we're, and it's just a question, if we say you can't be on the committee if you are, you've been elected within the last three years, then we would be saying that to ourselves, or would those rules be actually established and written? Because if Mr. Britton's going to accept anybody who's elected, then are we bound by those rules that we are making right now that we can't put anybody on there who's been in an elected office for, for the last three years? And that's just an example.
Well, I'm not sure what the, if you were an elected official in another county, another state, would that, or was that an elected official from this body or this county within the last five years?
Well, I think, I think it was from this, I got a feeling it was from this area.
But who does that due diligence then to find out if they've been elected or not?
Oh, well, no.
Or the rules.
Yeah, we know.
We know.
But the, but the other rules, I just used that as an example. If you don't want anyone who, whatever the rules are, you don't want anyone being selected, then how is due diligence done to determine the applications we received don't meet some of those rules or not meet them?
We could just see them anywhere and we'll just know.
Or on the application say, have you been elected official in the city of Elvito or a staff member within the last five years?
Yeah.
Yes or no? And that's, that's easy.
So, we're using all of those two criteria?
Well, that's a good question. Are we?
And the voter. You got to be a voter at the time you apply.
Exactly.
Registered voter.
All right. I think some of those questions are already on the, on the committee applications for, for boards and stuff, on the board applications. I think there's, there's a few questions on there, but I know that the elected official, but it asked for like prior experiences and stuff like that on it. I, you know, I, I'm open to receiving all applications, and then each member picks three of them, and it's up to that member to vet their, the individuals that they, that they're wanting to appoint.
Mr. Chairman, my concern with that is that, you know, if I run the Charter Review Committee and I'm a recently elected official, I'm going to go hijack that thing. And if we just remove some of those people from the, from the mix, maybe the shyer people will, will feel a little bit more assertive. So, we're, we're all kind of assertive, like you have to be a certain level of assertiveness to.
What's the purpose of the facilitator?
Well, I guess the facilitator fits a, I've, I've seen strong facilitators and less strong ones.
Well, let's get a strong one.
Who's going to hush up? Anybody who's, give equal speaking time.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, honestly, I, I think we, you know, we need to just, as individual council members, when we're making our appointees, we need to, you know, truly, you know, vet who we're appointing for, for the, for the Charter Review and kind of, you know, leave it up to us on that, on that aspect of it, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, so I, so we're the vetting committee, and we're the, we're the vetting committee?
Well, we're appointing them.
We can self-exclude whoever we want. We've got three choices.
Okay.
All right, so. All right, so going back to it, we will receive, we'll receive all the applications on February 17th?
Well, probably a little bit before that, whatever the deadline is.
Well, I'm sorry.
The Friday before the 17th.
Well, we'll, we'll receive them at the council meeting on the 17th.
I was looking at it, I think if you set your deadline for February the 10th.
Right.
Then you should, we should be fine.
Right, well, what I'm saying is, is that the council will see them on the 17th agenda.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and, and then let you set the deadline for when the applications need to be in in order to get them to the council on the 17th. And I think the, the two things that we, we are requiring is registered voters and a voting age, well, the registered voters, then they're of voting age hopefully. But, but then from there, each council member will, yes.
And a city resident.
And a city resident.
Yeah, city, and can we do the checkbox as just so we know if somebody might have been former staff?
I'm sorry?
A checkbox, have you been employed by the city of Oviedo in the last five years? Just, just for, so people can make an informed decision.
Okay.
Is that consensus?
It's not a restriction, you can put anything you want on the application.
It's on the checkbox and, and then.
You can make a decision from there.
You can make a decision from there, yeah.
That was gonna be my suggestion, don't exclude anybody, give everybody an opportunity to apply. If a resident, if a resident is passionate about serving this city, I'm, I would say welcome them with open arms. Don't, don't limit yourselves when it comes to that, but once you get those applications in, then be very, very judicious in how you pick them.
Correct. All right, do you need any further direction?
Let's see here, let's see, citizen voter, voter, okay. I, I think, no, I've got everything, because if we set the deadline for February the 10th, then that'll give us time to collect them all and then get them all to you. And then we'll also, we'll get right, I'm sure Mr. Boop's sitting in the audits going, oh my gosh, what has he committed me to? That we'll, we'll find a facilitator so that we can get, get it on the February 17th agenda and, you know, get the process started, so.
All right.
But we'll, we'll make that our goal.
Okay, all right, anything else for the, for this item? All right, we'll close item 12, and next item is item 13, discussion item, the United States Conference of Mayors. Mr. Cobb, did you want to give, give us an introduction on that?
Actually, Deputy Mayor, I mean, this obviously was another thing that you had a preliminary discussion on January the 6th, but I think it would probably be better for you and the mayor to educate everyone because you two have the most, have the most knowledge as far as about the Conference of Mayors. Obviously, Mr. Kelly went in and looked at the website and pulled general information off for you to prepare you for this discussion tonight, but I think it would, since you all have had personal experience with the group, I think it would probably be good to let you share what you all know about the group for your discussion.
Well, it, it's a very interesting organization in that it's based out of Washington DC, and they have lobbyists. In the past, this group has been interested in having a presence in DC, and this is a lot less expensive way to get it. It's $3,500 a year, and anytime you have questions about things like, for, for the charter, for example, I'm inclined to call these guys up and say, hey, can you send us some charters, some interesting chart, the, the charters that you think are the most interesting from around the country, just for comparison. And, you know, League of Cities, you can do this also, but it's a, a little bit different group in its focus because there is the advocacy angle, and they also have a funding mechanism. And it, this, this is mainly, it would fault me to show up to this stuff and show them why any of the funding should come back to Oviedo. So there's two meetings a year, there's one that begins today, obviously I'm not at it. And there's another one in Texas in the summer, and the, the summer meeting sort of shifts around, and it's usually a three-day event. And you can see the little thing there, there's best, best practices, and, you know, they talk about environmental issues that are very broad. What they've said at, of this little presentation that the Deputy Mayor and I were at is, it's all a matter of how many zeros are after it, whether it's budget or, you know, your homeless population, ours is not, not real big, and some people, this is a big deal for them, and gun, gun control, violence, all these different things. But it does seem like a, a useful thing because they've got about a million dollars that they give out to their members every year. And of the people who were in the room, every mayor who was a member of this organization had brought back more than their dues over the course of participating in this over a number of years. So if it pays for itself, gets us an outside perspective, seems like a good thing.
Yeah, I, I attended the information session with the, the mayor, and I, I think what I found interesting in this organization was the, the ability that they have their own funds, and they, they can, you can apply for, for, for lack of a better word, grants through the organization to, to bring back to your city. And I, you know, I think it is a, a way for, you know, similar to, to the League of Cities, a way for, for mayors to get together and discuss issues that, that they're having, and, and the, the mayors that were at the, the meeting, like our mayor said, had brought back more funds than their, their dues. It gives them, you know, it does give them access to, when they, one of the, one of the meetings is in Texas, the other meeting is, is in DC. They do get access to elected officials in Washington and create a, kind of a, a large, I don't know if lobbying block is, is the right term for it, but, but they can bring city issues and, and to, to DC and try to, to work those out as well. I, I think it's worth a, you know, definitely worth a shot to allow the mayor to join this organization for a year and kind of see, you know, see how it works and, you know, and, and kind of go through it and, and then, you know, go from there after that. It's just a one-year commitment, correct?
I, I would ask that everybody consider it three-year commitment, because I'm only here for two years, and I can commit to participating heavily for, you know, two years at the summer meetings. But to extend it to whether I'm here or not, three years out, I think it would be a, a positive thing for the city to try to look beyond just, it, it's not about, it's not about me as the mayor, this is about what is good for the city for the long haul.
But it's a, but, but it's annual dues.
It is annual dues, yes.
So, so next year, when the annual dues come back up, the discussion can be had with whoever's sitting up here at that point in time?
But it, it, I don't think it's gonna be, I won't be able to bring back $3,500 in one year. I think it needs to be somebody, a presence from Oviedo over a number of years, building those relationships. That's when the money can potentially come back after we show our value to the organization and, and, you know, help them understand what our account is all about.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Since the dues are annually, bringing up that discussion from your experience over the years, whether you feel at that point it's still worthwhile being in.
Okay.
Because my questions are, are kind of, well, how many mayors of cities our size are in the organization? Because a lot of these organizations of mayors are the much larger cities, and they have the more influence.
It's one, one vote per person in this organization?
Right, I understand that, but it's one vote, but if the larger cities outnumber our size cities, then your one vote may, a, a city's our size may or may not have influence. So that's just one question. And as far as lobbying, how specific is that lobbying going to be for us compared to lobbying for the larger cities, the greater masses of, of the organizational participants? Those are just questions, and being there for a year, you'd be able to answer those questions looking at the next year.
Well, on, on the lobbying issue, the way I understood it, and I called and, and kind of grilled them on it, if we had a specific issue, they would be in a position to serve a very similar role to our current federal lobbyists, where they help us set up meetings, and we're, we're currently paying, I think it's $60,000 a year. And I think most people in the audience know, I, I did not think that was a particularly grand idea. But I do think $3,500 to have, to be part of an organization that has all the connections, the same connections, who can line up those meetings if for some reason we needed to go to DC, that's probably, that's hedging our bets pretty well, right there.
No, I, I have no objections, but I think we just need to discuss it year by year from what, what occurs during the first year of membership.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I sure appreciate what the mayor's trying to do, I really do. Appreciate the efforts to innovate and get us involved in different things, but I don't agree with this particular group. I looked at the website a little bit and a little concerned where some of the issues they're talking about, and I think we have a lot of redundancy already in the groups that we have, I mean, we have, we are proud of so many groups, I don't see this one group as being advantageous for us to spend, it's $3,600 on it at this point in time.
All right, thank you. Mr. Britton, Councilman Britton?
Well, I don't, and I'm just reading the website here too, it looks like their Washington DC meeting is.
Right now.
Today.
Yeah, it's right now.
And then they meet the, this summer in, it looks like Austin. If you want to see a city with a lot of traffic, go to Austin, I was just there. $3,500 is a, you know, it's an investment, we, we, I don't know how much we spend for League of Cities, I use League of Cities all the time. The one thing I'm looking for as far as issues is where they stand on home rule, and I'm not sure this organization is, gets down to that, that level of fidelity like home, like League of Cities is doing. That's my biggest concern now as a, as a group of cities in Florida, anyway. But I have no objection to it, and I think like Councilman Chudnow said, why, why don't we just budget for it next year and then we can bring it up? If we don't, if we want to do it, it's budgeted, if, if we don't, we don't. Fair enough?
That sounds fair.
So, so budgeting for it for next year, or?
Do it for this year, but then budget for it for next year, and, and then we don't, we don't have to worry about it.
Okay.
Well, along with, I know it's only $3,500, but attending the two meetings a year is also, also comes with a cost.
Well, we, Brian, I think we have a budget, a city council budget for travel and training, and I, you know, personally, I, I limit it to the League of Cities conference, but we could self-monitor ourselves on how much we, we travel or what events we go to. If, if the mayor chooses to do this, I don't have any objection to it, but I'm, you know, we can afford to do everything.
Yeah, absolutely not. And I, I was thinking, I'd drive down to Texas with the kids and, you know, you all know I'm thrifty. I stayed in, I stayed in Airbnb at the League of Cities meeting to save a few hundred bucks.
Austin has the I-4 ultimate beat by twentyfold.
Oh, wow, and, and that might be good to experience.
All right.
We, we would budget it appropriately, both through registration and travel, we would, we would budget everything.
Well, I, I might ask them if they will waive the registration fee for the summer meeting. They had volunteered to waive it for this first one, and logistics-wise, I, I didn't feel comfortable trying to rush that through or, or take the dive without, without consensus from council.
Well, just find out which one's more expensive and get them to waive them.
Exactly.
So, so I know you, you've still got a opinion on, on the organization, is there?
It's very, it's very, it's very liberal, guys, as, as far as some of the social issues, but it, it does, it comes with the opportunity to, in, in my mind, this is a path towards having a presence in DC without having to have our own dedicated lobbyists, and it's the best path that I've been able to learn about.
Well, that's, that's one way of looking at it, it's an, it's an augmentation of the lobbyists we have that are working on our, the issues for us specifically. We can tap into the League of Mayors, I think, just as well and, and address other issues. Maybe that, you know, if there's grant money or, or whatever that they, they have their hands into, we can do that.
The cool thing about League of Mayors is you don't have to join, but you can go to everything, that's what I found out. They kept sending invoices, and I, and I said, what if I don't want to do this?
So we don't have to join?
Can I still go to meetings and they're?
We just saved ourselves $3,500.
But it's, it doesn't have the same, same level of presence or gravitas. And I talked to Thomas Self, Marco Rubio's sidekick, because I, I was concerned, Councilwoman Smith, about some of, some of the content and the gist I got. And, and I wanted to know, because we have two Republican, very conservative, I feel, senators, and I wanted to know from their, their staff, does this organization come and people roll their eyes? And, and that was not what, he, he said, no, that it is a respected organization, and they take it seriously.
I, 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 I respect your, your opinion and everything, I really do, but once reading the website, I'm very concerned about it, and I'm very nervous about some of their opinions on issues, so, but that's my opinion.
I'll, I'll bring a new opinion, I'm only one vote though up there.
Um, I, you know, I, I still think it's, it's worth a shot, it's just, it just puts another tool in our toolbox to try to bring, you know, money back to the city and, uh, knowledge back to the city from, you know, what other cities are doing and, and the ability to, to, you know, have some additional influence in, in Washington as well. So, you know, I think it's worth a shot for a year for, you know, for the, the amount of money that the dues, dues are and the, the travel to the different locations, so that's, that's my opinion. What, what's the consensus of council? I think we, I think we have a consensus for it, you okay with that?
I concur.
Okay.
That's what you're looking for.
All right, Chief Chudnow, you, or, sorry. Councilman Chudnow?
Yeah, I think a one-year trial is, and, and I do understand the Councilmember Smith's concerns, because I had those same concerns looking at the website. And again, sometimes people judge you by the organizations you belong to, but I just think we just, that it needs to be in, in consideration.
Right, and if you have issues, I'm sure, you know, with, with the organization as a whole, I'm sure the, the mayor can definitely try to bring those issues up to, you know, but I think it's just worth a shot to just let her, let her go and, and join this organization for at least a year, so.
I appreciate it, guys, thank you.
All right. All right, Mr. Cobb, you got the direction you need on that?
We have consensus to, to allow the mayor to join the group, so.
All right, on to reports, Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. One of the things that each of you should have received a letter from Representative Aliva, who's our Speaker of the House of Representatives of the State of Florida, and it was regarding House Bill 1159, I think it was, Section 163045 of the Florida statutes, and it was, I, I took it as a threat, but I don't know how you had, how you all took the letter, but he was basically saying, reminding us that they're watching us for, in the bill itself, this section regards tree removal. And what the bill says is, is that if a resident or if a property owner, is, they're allowed to remove a tree without any government oversight if they receive a, a letter from a certified arborist or a licensed landscape architect, that the tree in question is a danger to persons or property. And so he just reminded everybody that they're watching and they will be looking at it. One of the things that I wanted to let you all know about is, I don't read this statute to say we have to change our regulations. However, it does say that as far as how we enforce those regulations, then the state has issued a preemption. And so that's the status that we've taken with this, is that our codes are fine, they do not, our codes do not have any conflict with this statute. But if a resident or if a property owner has this certification from. if a property owner has this certification from this arborist, or from a landscape architect, then we don't require anything. Our code allows people to remove trees, that's one of the things it does. The thing that it says is that if the tree's of a certain size, you're going to have to mitigate for it, because we are a tree city, and we do place a value on our trees, and we place a value on the shade. And so, what this statute says, if they get this certification, if they have a landscape architect or certified arborist come out to their property and say, certify that that tree is a danger to persons or property, they can have the tree removed with no city oversight whatsoever. They don't have to get a permit, they don't have to do any type of mitigation, there wouldn't be, you know, they don't have any, have to, have to come to the city. One of the things that we do ask, and we've had a few people, and actually, we recommend it to the residents when they come and talk to us, say, look, if you can get this certification, obviously, the arborist and the landscape architect, they've got to start, they really have to sit there and look at the tree and make sure that it's within, in the statute. But we asked them if they would give us the letter, because I, I can guarantee you, when someone starts to remove a tree, there's a neighbor on the phone calling the city, saying, hey, they're removing a tree, I don't see them, I don't think they have a permit. And if we've got the letter on file, then we can say, no, they're within the state statute. It's okay for them to remove the tree. Big concern is that everybody starts wanting to have the trees removed, and there's not really anything we can do about it. They passed this bill at the last minute of the session, we really didn't have any time to react to it, it just happened, and then, on July 1st, it became effective, so I just wanted to assure you that we're okay, and that if they did come asking us about it, then we'll show that we did comply with the statute. That's the thing, I wanted to let you know about that. Ms. Babor needs a favor. We need an alternate for Calmo. Evidently, we're supposed to have a primary and a secondary. I know Mr. Britton has been our primary for years, and then if he can't attend, he usually asks somebody to go in his place, but they're actually asking us to send them a name, so if we could, I-
I can be the alternate.
Ooh, okay.
Okay, so Barbara, Mr. Britton will be the alternate.
All right.
And I'm happy that you're on it. I think you're going to enjoy it.
Okay, thank you.
And one of the, the last thing I have for you, Deputy Mayor, is Councilman Chudnow actually contacted me this week, I think he has a wonderful idea he brought to us, about doing a preference survey on garbage. And taking the ideas that we talked about for the RFP, what we're, what we're asking the companies to respond to, the types of services, but turning them into a preference survey, just to give us an idea of what the residents would be willing to tolerate. And I talked to Mr. Kelly about it, we can, there's all kinds of ways that we can do it, for Littleton over in Austin. I just wanted to let you all know that Mr. Chudnow had a wonderful idea, and I think we should run with it, to be honest. And hopefully, what we can do is do the survey while they're, while the companies are responding, so that we can then, once we get the responses, we'll have input from the citizens to say what their tolerance is. They come, may come back and tell us they're okay with every other week, I don't, I don't think they would, but they might, you know? So, I think it's a wonderful idea, we'd like to run with the idea, and so I just wanted to bring it up tonight to see if y'all can, if y'all agree with it.
Are you going to put cost estimates for each component?
Well, that's hard to do, since we don't have the-
I thought they, and I was confused in the presentation, it looked like if we did ever, everything we wanted, it was going to more than double what we pay now.
We could put those, we could use those, those preliminary estimates that, you know, the modeling, we could put something like that, so, you know-
I'd like to give, you know, an idea of if they, if they want the, the moon, what it's going to cost, an idea of what it's going to cost.
Okay. You'd have, you know, more or less. We can't say it's exactly, that's all we can say. But, yeah, I think we could use those modeling estimates for that, I mean, I just wanted to know if you're okay to run with that.
Is everybody okay with that?
I thought it was a wonderful idea.
Sounds good, great.
Wonderful. That's all I have, Deputy Mayor.
All right. Mr. Hall?
Hall, nothing to work in the St. John's Office.
All right. Okay. Councilman Chudnow?
Just a few quick things, talking about, you know, other preemptions, I attended the Tri-County League of Cities, and they had a little workshop on home rule, and like Mr. Britton said earlier, home rule is being somewhat threatened by our state legislature. They, if you remember, back a few years, they preempted firearm regulations by the cities, which meant you could put a firing range in your 80 by 120 lot next to your neighbor. It took about two years of discussion with, with a lot of organizations, the Florida Chiefs Association was one of the, of the leaders, and we finally solved that by zoning issues, not by gun regist, gun issues. So, that's something that is a big concern to the League of Cities, and also, a lot of the others, of the League of Cities, and also, the other cities in the, in the Tri-County area. So, that's something we need to watch and be concerned about. Mr. Davis from OneByOne, I've done some, a lot of work with him, it's a great organization, so whatever we can do, like Mr. Britton said, to facilitate, helping that, would be greatly appreciated, I'm sure. And the last thing I have is, tomorrow, I'm going to be helping out the supervisor elections over at Oviedo High School, he's doing a, a voter registration drive and pre-voter registration drive. I'm going to be there as an elected official, answering some questions from the Oviedo High School seniors. I did the same thing at Haggerty, some of the questions are very interesting. So, that's all I have.
All right. Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few items. I participated in the MLK Parade yesterday as the parade marshal, and I had a wonderful time. It was so exciting, thank you. It was so exciting. And also, just wanted to mention our, my foundation, and I don't know if you got a chance to see the horse in the parade, his name was Nitro, and I forgot the name of the organization, I have to get that, who provided Nitro, it was a Clydesdale, and he was almost-
Horsepower Ranch, I think.
Yeah, so they were so nice to me to provide Nitro. Also, there is a Veterans Appreciation Lunch, March 25th, and you call the Community Services Department for Seminole County, if you're a veteran, to make your reservations, and you're allowed to bring one guest, if I'm not mistaken. It's March 25th, 2020, Wednesday, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and I'll keep reminding you about it. The phone number there is 407-665-2300. This morning, I had a chance to attend Hamilton Elementary School in Midway, they dedicated a physics bus, and this bus will go around to all the elementary schools, and this is the little brochure I got, and it's absolutely fantastic. They're trying to get the younger kids interested in physics, and it was amazing, and it's the only bus, physics bus in the United States, if I'm not mistaken, and they have several others planned, too. And I'm going to bring some more information about this, because I made some contact with the gentleman, and they're going to give me, they said there's scholarship money available for Seminole County students, that's not being utilized, and I wasn't able to get the information by this evening, but I will hopefully have it by the next meeting. One of the things that I was concerned about, at the League of Cities, we had a presentation from a, a gaming company, very interesting, and hopefully, I'll bring more information about the, the way technology has advanced. It's a gaming company, but they were into some fantastic things, I mean, I, I'm just amazed at what they were into, and I'm going to hopefully bring some information about some of those things in the future, but that's it, that's all I have.
All right, let's see. Mayor Slatter?
All right, I've got a couple of things coming up this Saturday. There is an opioid awareness day in partnership with the City of Longwood and the Sheriff's Department. If you know anybody who has an opioid problem, or you have one yourself and want to get a little bit more information, hop on over to Ryder Park over there, and then come back to Oviedo, because it's the Cops and Cars Show on the 25th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00. I did also want to address what Mr. Belland spoke about at the beginning, and that is the Sustainability Task Force. I thought there was consensus before I was up here for such a thing to be formed, and if there still is, can we get that rolling? Because 2050, that's kind of far away, but it's also kind of not that far away.
Right.
And I don't know what the process would be, would we need to advertise, or is it just, you know, anybody who wants to come can come?
We were, we were working on that, I was putting together some, kind of, some, some general guidelines for the organization, so that we could then receive applications, kind of like we do for other boards, so that we could more formalize it. But I've, I've been putting it together, but I know that it's been taking some time, I'll put some priority on that, to try to, to get that finalized, and before the council, so that we can discuss it.
Cool, I appreciate it. A lot of people approached after, for Chamber Commerce, there was State of the, State of the Region, and I was one of the people up on the panel, and half the audience gasped and half was excited when I mentioned putting affordable housing on top of the police station that isn't built yet. And it's a problematic idea, I, I do openly admit this, but we need to figure out a better idea, otherwise, I'm going to keep on loving this idea, it's the best one we've got. So, I'm wondering if there might be consensus to come up with, affordable housing, or maybe not even affordable, leave, leave that word out of it, because it's workforce, it's, it's an inclusive housing task force, how about that? Is that a good word, inclusive housing task force? To figure out how, you know, what, what can we do that doesn't violate property rights, and doesn't involve the city spending a bunch of money to try to be really creative in addressing inclusive, more inclusive housing? Anybody think this seems positive? No? No inclusive housing? Ah.
I'd like to see that, no, that's not it, I'd like to see the private sector come up with something. I think, I think that's something some of the, the private sector needs to, to spearhead.
But if we got a, some, boy, I could just go talk to people, too, but having something a little bit more formal would perhaps bring together people who might, whose paths might not otherwise intersect with some creative ideas, such as, why don't we sell the airspace, or not even sell, donate the airspace above a building that's not yet built, that we can fortify enough, we could donate that to more inclusive housing? So, we'll keep on, keep on thinking of ideas, hope, hope.
I think, I think you hit the nail on the head with the, the property rights issue and, and the private sector, I mean, they're building tiny homes, and they're selling them for, what was it?
Hundred and twenty thousand, at least.
I think there were like 160 lots, I saw, so it, I mean, it's still not affordable, but it's hard to, to take those rights away from an individual, other than, than the, like, the housing that we have over by the Aquatic Center, or over off of Chapman, to where there's some sort of a federal program that's involved in it, so, but-
But if we're never going to use the airspace over some of our city buildings, there, there is an opportunity there, I think.
That's a good spot for solar panels.
I, I can go on a very tippy-top layer, after the housing. Also wanted to bring up the Panther Street blue sludge issue, that has been going on for years, and it is not, in my opinion, appropriate for city staff to go and clean up after what the HOA and the HOA's contractor is supposed to be cleaning, and my understanding after the first year, and I was on council at the time it was first brought up, that it was a one-time deal, that staff went and cleaned it up to be nice. Well, it sounds like, two more years have passed, and the same situation keeps going on, and if, am I remembering correctly, Mr. Kamak, that it is Biotech who is doing this?
That is correct.
And, you know, it's a big enough company, they ought to be able to figure out how to clean up their mess, if, if that is what is required by whatever, my understanding is that there's a conservation, some sort of conservation agreement, that that area has to be sprayed, because it's killing, like, potato vines and invasive species.
That's, that's the whole purpose of it, they're, the community's St. John's River Water Management District permit has a requirement that they remove exotic species, so they go in, they spray it, let it die.
It's gross.
Yes.
And it smells, like, I ride my bike by there, and it smells like death.
And once it dies, then they go in, they remove it.
But they aren't removing it.
So, we've been, yes, we did do it the one time, we did do it, but we've been actually nagging them to death to get it, get it removed, so we, we make the phone call.
Is, is there no way other than nagging, like, is this just the way life is, is we have to nag them every day?
We're trying to, you know, we're looking at ways to see how we could get St. John's Delore a bigger hammer on them.
Okay.
One of the things we're trying to do, but, yes, it, pretty much, you've got to, you've just got to stay on top of them, and Ms. Stewart in Public Works, she's been the primary, she's been the point, point of contact on it, she's taken the lead, so she's doing everything she can to get it done, and I know she communicates with Mr. Kamak quite a bit on that as well, so.
That's all I've got, but do you have?
Well, this is, this is for our discussion.
Okay. Can we talk in the morning?
Thank you.
All right, that's all I've got for today.
All right. Councilman Britton?
I don't have much, I just want to reiterate, the MLK Day was very nice, I love, I loved that parade. All I really have, though, is, I don't know if anyone read the paper this morning, and you got to kind of look at what you've got, and look at what other people have, and there was a nice article on Howie and the Hills, and they are dysfunctional. They've got a councilman that's suing the city for a million dollars, and they're fighting with each other, and I read that, and just thought, you know, we may not always agree with each other, but we get along pretty well up here, and we're, we're still in this little storming phase, but I think we're gonna, we're gonna start gelling, and we'll, we'll get stuff done, so, appreciate what we have, because others aren't, don't have that. That's all I got.
All right. So, back to the spray issue, I think if we could just kind of get together, kind of, if you could just provide us with a report on, on kind of what's going on with the, with Panther Street, and, and just let us know if there's anything we can do to help to, to push that issue forward, and try to get that cleaned up. Let's see, Round Lake Park, that, the, the issues that were brought to us on that, I think, you know, if we can expedite that as well, to get those lights in the building moved, and everything, you know, expeditiously as possible, that'd be great to, to do that. The, speaking of Round Lake Park, the MLK Day celebration that was over there yesterday was tremendous, it was a great event, a great parade, and the mural was, was awesome, that they, it wasn't quite complete, but, but it's a, it's a great addition to that park, and we're making huge strides on the park, and, and I think it will be a, a gem for the city. You know, we, you know, I've, I've used it for, for my children, for their, their homecoming and prom pictures and stuff, because, on the little dock out there, because, because you didn't have to, you know, fight the crowds over at Center Lake Park, so it's, you know, it's definitely a nice gem over there, and, and it's just getting better. Drew, congratulations, grandpa. So, yeah, it was, the, the birth was, was yesterday, correct, or was it Sunday?
September 13th.
Yeah, and you're back here already. That's dedication, right there. The, the, the tree legislation that you were talking about, the way I read it, and I believe you stated it, was that if a arborist approves, you know, or basically certifies that the tree can be removed, because it's going to harm an individual or a property, then we have no say in it, no mitigation, no nothing. The only thing I, I, you know, I fear is that there'll be these arborists out there basically selling their services, you know, you want your tree removed, and we'll, we'll sign, sign off on it.
We, we call them fifty-dollar willies, is what we call them. You give me fifty dollars, they'll do anything for you.
Right, and so-
No doubt.
So, I don't know if there's a way to, to- So, I don't know if there's a way to, to kind of, when we do get these arborists coming in, and we get these letters all the time, if we start to see a pattern, if there's a way to, because I'm sure they got a certification program and stuff like that, a way to kind of send them back that way, to have them reviewed and stuff, just so that we don't end up losing all these trees, because, you know, people just want to remove their trees, you know, as a way of regulating it to some degree. Let's see, State of the City. You had mentioned that in, I think, a past report. I don't know what the status of that was.
I don't think we've made any progress at all, but if y'all are still willing to talk, well, maybe, are we allowed to, without violating Sunshine, talk about what categories, you know, what topics people would be most interested in addressing? Because this would probably be a good thing to talk about ahead of time.
When is the State of the City scheduled for?
Whenever we make it. It's usually March. Is it set already?
I think it's March 4th.
March 4th? Okay. So, we're getting pretty close to needing to be thinking about this.
Okay. So...
So, maybe have that be a discussion, or do you want to just hash it out right now?
March 4th.
Okay.
What was the preference to...
Want to hash it out?
Or to bring it back to the next meeting?
If, if...
Let's bring it back.
If we bring it back, I could just come up with rough categories, and we'll find that initial email. I think probably divide it up pretty evenly.
All right. And lastly, it was brought up during public comment about a social media post. It wasn't done this weekend. It was done a while back, and it was a satire. It was, there was some humor around the whole thread, and if it offended anybody, I do apologize, and I apologize to you if that offended you.
I didn't see it.
So, but that's all I had. So, is there anything else for the good of the order?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One thing I neglected to say is, at the MLK celebration, Lieutenant Nelson Janeau was given an award by OCIA for his continuing support and work. He's the secretary of the organization. He does a lot of work for the organization. He was recognized, and I think that needs to be publicly stated for Lieutenant Janeau.
Congratulate him, and also give kudos to Mr. Ben Williams for organizing that on his little scooter yesterday.
That's a great scooter.
He kept us in line.
Yes. Anything else? All right. With that, future meeting dates, Monday, February 3rd, 2020, at 5:30 p.m. is the CRA meeting. Monday, February 3rd, at 6:30 p.m. is a regular session. Monday, February 17th, at 6:30 p.m. is a regular session, and Monday, March 2nd, at 6:30 p.m. is a regular session. And there will not be a meeting on Monday, March 16th, because of spring break, I believe. With that, that's all we have. Meeting's adjourned. It's 9:04.